Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, July 20, 2016. At this time, we invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would ask that we take a moment to remember residents Shirley Munia, Ann Rubello, Henry Goff II, and the victims of the tragedies that occurred in Dallas on July 7th and in Nice, France on July 14th. We offer a moment of silence in remembering to them. Thank you.
We're going to skip down to, in case we have a couple late guests come in, number five, approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of executive session of Thursday, May 17, 2016.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Passes unanimously. That's how my doctor writes the prescriptions.[158.66][158.66](Laughter). I'll entertain a motion also to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, June 8, 2016.
So moved.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 2A-17 in the amount of $83,602.98 payroll. Warrant 2B-17 in the amount of $244,148.87 accounts payable, both dated July 13. Warrant 3A-17 in the amount of $106,026.99 dated July 20, payroll. Warrant 3B-17 in the amount of $168,601.23, also dated July 20, accounts payable, be approved.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Here and none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Correspondents. Tonight, we have a letter from the Board of Selectmen to the Dayton Police Department that I would graciously ask Selectmen's zografas as the author to read it.
I will do. I will do that. I just wanted to comment that this letter is dated July 14. I actually wrote this before the tragedy in Nice happened, but I think that the sentiments expressed in the letter, you know, transcend both incidents, so keep that in mind while I read this. So this letter is to all of our distinguished officers and personnel with the Dayton Police Department. Dear distinguished officers, given the recent tragedy that occurred in Dallas, Texas, where members of the Dallas Police Department and the Dallas Area Rapid Transit, or DART, were senselessly and brutally murdered, we feel it is important to send our support and gratitude to the entire Dayton Police Department. After all, it is each and every one of you who selflessly and bravely risk your lives every day to protect and serve our tight-knit community. There is a strong bond in our town between your department and our community, as evidenced by the outpouring of support that you have received from countless residents in town. The foundation underlying this support is trust. Rightfully so, you have earned the trust and respect of our collective community. You keep drugs out of our schools in our town. You prevent robberies and theft, homicides and home invasions. You keep our streets and our schools safe, and you even respond to medical emergencies. You prioritize our safety and security over your own every day, day in and day out. Every single person fortunate enough to call Dayton home, past and present, owes you a debt of gratitude, respect, and appreciation. On behalf of the Town of Dayton, we would like to thank you for your valiant, noble service to this town. In the spirit of cooperation, we will continue to foster an open-door policy between the Board of Selectmen and your department. Respectfully submitted, Board of Selectmen.
Very nice.
Thanks Brett.
Thank you.
Let me jump back to agenda item number four, just to publicly recognize two young individuals, Jeffrey Allen Vitolo Jr. and Robert Monroe, who were recently awarded the Eagle Scout Award. We have some citations that we will make sure that they do get. Unfortunately, they could not be here tonight, but we did want to acknowledge them on our televised meeting. So congratulations, young men, and keep up the good work. Now we'll bounce back down to announcements. I'll start these. Trash bags, shops' disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call (508) 669-6431 for more information. Excuse me. There is a prescription drug drop box now located at the Dayton Police Station. It is limited to pill-form prescriptions only. You may contact the Dayton Police Station at (508) 669-6711 for more information. The Board of Selectmen will be having their next regular meeting on Wednesday, August 3, 2016. The Dayton Public Library has museum passes available for residents with a library card. Passes include Buttonwood Park Zoo, Battleship Cove, Museum of Science, the Salem Witch Museum, Mystic Aquarium, the Hall at Patriot Place, and others. They are available on a first-come, first-served basis. You can reserve them by phone, in person, or online at www.daytonlibrary.org. The Food Bank Distribution will take place Saturday, July 23, 2016, 8:30 to 10 a.m. That's this coming Saturday. There will be a celebration on Saturday, July 30, from noon time to 5:00 p.m. behind Town Hall at the Lions Pavilion to honor the D.R. Falcons baseball team for winning the Division II Eastern Massachusetts State Finals. There will be a small parade, followed by a cookout. All are invited. Help us celebrate this huge achievement between the folks and parents and proud relatives and friends of these baseball players from both Dayton and Rehoboth. If you would like to help out with the event or would like to donate, please call the Selectmen's office at (508) 669-6431 and choose option one on the main menu when you call. We are in the active mode of accepting donations. Some of the pizza establishment to go off it, you know, send some pizzas over, some subs, anything in any form, bottled water. We don't plan on charging all the people who show up anything for any refreshments or little tidbits to eat. It's a celebration. We will be holding a raffle at the conclusion of it, and the 100% of the proceeds from that raffle of any products that people want to bring or donate will go to a $500 scholarship each year to a Dayton-Rehoboth baseball senior who is going to go to college. As long as the money is there, we'll continue to give it out. So again, this is for July 30. We're starting to make the final preparations. Any help that anybody can give, please give us a call. We'll be very, very glad to come and receive whatever you might have. Thank you. Meetings for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health are now being posted to YouTube under the name Town of Dayton Meetings. You may go to the town website and follow the link to Dayton's YouTube page, or you can go to YouTube and type in Town of Dayton Meetings. If you need further assistance, call the Board of Selectmen's office and ask for Selectmen zografas. Recycling is now being picked up on a weekly basis with your household trash. Some residents may have experienced a change to their scheduled date. If you need assistance or have any questions, please contact the Board of Health at (508) 669-6431.
Karen, do you have that TMLP?
TMLP, Notice of Service Interruption. We have a piece of correspondence from the Taunton Municipal Light Plant. This is to all customers who are currently supplied electricity from Taunton Municipal Light Plant, predominantly those in the North Dayton area. And it states, "Please be advised that your electrical service will be interrupted on this Saturday, July 23, from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. TMLP will be upgrading existing lines to serve your present and future needs and to improve the quality of electrical service. We hope this will not cause you any great inconvenience." They do warn that all computers and sensitive electronic equipment should be turned off and unplugged prior to the shutdown. Again, the shutdown plan will be from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact us, (508) 824-5844. Please take the following precautions: Have reserve water on hand for domestic use, and minimize use of refrigerator and freezer doors. Brett, would you like to take that next announcement, B?
Sure.
I think we want, because we still need some.
And I will, I will release a posting on my Facebook page, not by the Town of Dayton, of course. We are still accepting volunteer applications for the Town Administrator Study Committee. This will be a very important committee. It will be pivotal in the recruitment and hiring process for our newly created position of Town Administrator, which is really exciting. If you have an interest in being involved in this process, don't hesitate to send us an application. We are still accepting applications and happy to review and receive them.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Move on to old business. It's not that old. It's actually going to be new. It's been on the agenda a few times. And this is the Review Discussing Act on the Architect's Contract for the Dayton Public Library. We have with us tonight our library director, Jocelyn Tavarez. Jocelyn, would you, would you like to give us a little intro here of what we're doing?
Um...
I know it's been a long time.
I know.[897.12][897.12](Laughter). Okay, so, we, um...
Oh, you want, yeah.
Okay.
Your number 14.
Otherwise, I was about to say it's 14.[907.12][907.12](Laughter).
All right.
Six is not 13, right?
Yeah. I'll take 14. All right, so, um, the trustees, with the help of our owner's project manager, P3, have selected the architect firm, L.L.B., to help us with our feasibility study. And in the capacity of owner's project manager, P3 has also helped us with negotiating a contract for their services, and that is what we're presenting with you tonight. Rob Tedesco is one of the project managers, along with Dan, who was here earlier that you've met. He's kind of the lead on the project, but Rob has been here, and he's been integral to getting the document form and working with myself and Jennifer to get terms and conditions that would benefit the town. And Jennifer is happy with the end result. He was able to sell it to the architect. The architect is happy with it. We don't have his signature yet, but I will have that. And the Board of Trustees has voted on it and approved the contract. That was done at their meeting of Thursday. I think that date was the 14th. And now we're presenting it to you in its final form. If you have any questions, Rob or myself could answer.
I think you've heard all the questions.
That might, yeah.
No, this board lead, you know, as you, most of the committees and departments in town know, we, we rest heavily on Jennifer's background in procurement laws and certifications and what have you. She's very meticulous. She goes through all the particulars, and we rely on her judgment tremendously, because none of us are certified purchasing agents or what have you. She has assured us that it's to her satisfaction. There's no hiccups, there's no, you know, things that come back, come back to bite us or anything like that, so we will be in the signing mode.
Oh, thank you.
You know, with her blessing, so.
Yeah, no, I know I won't go to jail with Jen.
No, no.
I'm very happy with that as well, so.
And it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a good thing to have, you know, because when you don't have the right people doing things, you know, you can get, get a municipality in an awful lot of trouble.
Yeah, and that's...
Mr. O'Kane probably knows. He's statewide, he sees it, you know?
Yeah, and that's not what we...
I thought maybe you were suggesting those are...
No, no.[1112.33][1112.33](Laughter). Not yet.[1114.33][1114.33](Laughter).
Who's going to try to convince the architect? No.[1119.58][1119.58](Laughter).
Yeah, no, and we certainly don't want to cause...
No, no.
Extra...
I will, I do have a question. Why are there so many signature lines?
For all, for the Board of Trustees and for you, all three of you.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the only reason, to accommodate.
Now, you want the architect to sign this first, or us to sign it?
Um, we can have you sign it while you're here, if you're ready to sign it tonight. That's fine.
Yeah, it's up to the board.
I've been through it.
I know Jennifer has gone through it with me, and more or less she highlighted the parts that, you know, she would like to have seen changed, which, you know, she was happy with the changes, so, so I'm good with it.
Okay. I will, now that this has taken place, I can meet with the architect and have him sign it, and it will be official, and we can just start the work. I want to thank Rob for all his work. He really, really, really advocated on our behalf and did a great job for the town. So I think we made a great choice with our OPM firm, so, thank you, Rob.
And moving forward, if anyone has any questions throughout the process, even though we're signing a contract this evening, you know, we're always available to come in any and when, at any time, to answer questions here, present progress, and whatever you can.
And you're out of Pawtucket?
What's up?
Your firm's out of Pawtucket?
Nope, I'm from P3.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, the OPM.
The architect is from Pawtucket.
Okay, okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the signing of the contract for...
Oh, yeah.
The architect.
I like the motion.
What is this one, another one?
Those are...
Five originals, excuse me.
I have five because that's what Jennifer demanded when we did the OPM...
Oh, so we don't need this one?
So we don't need, we, we sign these ones?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I have five originals, clean copies, and I'll distribute the fresh sets when they're all complete.
I will second that.
The motions were made and seconded. Is there any other discussion, questions, issues?
This will kind of allow you to keep the ball...
Yep.
Great.
We're going to crank, and I'll update you, and as, we'll have open meetings. If you want to come join us, feel free, the public, come in, join our meetings, and we'll move along.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. It passes unanimously.
Keep some.
Where's the stamp?
We can superimpose the signature on the other four.[1322.15][1322.15](Laughter).
You can stamp it.
Yes.[1325.15][1325.15](Laughter).
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. We'll trade. Oh, I didn't sign, I didn't print that.
You're signing fast, and they're not so...
But I print a lot slower.
I think I just spelled my name wrong.
He needs the stamp. It's time for the stamp.
You got to print your name on this one, Brett.
Thank you, I just realized.
And I was about to say, you're doing so much smoother, more smooth than the trustees did, but obviously we got so...
Wait till you see how I spell my name, though. Did you quit already?
You gotta, you gotta add your title, Brett, after the printed name.
Who's this, yours?
No, that's good fact to carry. That's the agreement.
Okay.
We'll move along, we're going to change channels at home.
I want to thank Karen, too, for fielding all my questions. Thank you. I appreciate all your help.
You have five?
Yep.
Thank you.
We just need...
We're in business.
Now, do we get one of those, or...
Yeah, you will when the architect signs it. I'll be in.
Oh, we'll get that completed.
The complete set, you can get rid of all the others.
Can I keep this?
If you like it, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too.
Good night.
What station you going to watch run?
I have cable TV, or I can tune in to the rest of the show.
And moving along, under new business, Review Discussing Act and a road opening permit for the Dayton Water District to install a new water service at 578 Hart Street. I do have a request from Dayton Water District for a road cut at 578 Hart Street to install a new water service.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
And I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Passes unanimously.
Is that typically a one-day job, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Usually.
Mm-hmm.
Next, on the new business, Review Discussing Act on a retirement notification from an individual of the Dayton Fire Department. This is dated July 14, 2016. Dear Board of Selectmen, this letter is to inform you of my retirement from the Town of Dayton as a firefighter slash paramedic. The effective date of my retirement will be July 15, 2016. It has been a pleasure to serve the townspeople for the last 36 years, starting right out of high school in 1979. It is time to pass the torch, or should I say, pass the hose nozzle, to another firefighter so they can continue to serve the townspeople as I have. I would like to still be able to serve the townspeople in the capacity of a potential call person as my time permits. He has also requested that he continue to participate in some of the town events that occur in the course of the year. And from this board, it's signed sincerely Frederick Wilber Jr. Some of he's known by Fred, some known by Dan. Tremendous individual, tremendous gentleman. He loves the Town of Dayton. His heart's been here since he was born. This department will surely miss him. I know I have an awful lot of respect for Mr. Wilber, and we wish him the best in his future endeavors, and for a healthy and happy and safe retirement.
Make a motion to accept Mr. Wilber's resignation with best wishes from the board.
And I will second that motion with best wishes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. That passes happy wishes for retirement unanimously. Before we, reports. Do we have any reports?
Yes, just an update on the Center Street sidewalk project. The Bristol County Agricultural High School Board of Trustees appointed one of its members, George Matoza from Berkeley, as the liaison to the town for the Center Street sidewalk project. The trustees voted to give the town blanken easement for their property for this project and offered the front yard and driveway of the Harrison property that was acquired by the county to be used as the staging area during the construction period of the sidewalk. I talked to Mr. Matoza, I believe it was last week, and advised... I talked to Mr. Matoza, I believe it was last week, and advised him that we have engaged the services of John Delano and Associates, and once the plans come in and we have the plans in the surveyor's report, I will get back to him so we can give him an update on where we are with the project. But I would like to express my appreciation to the Board of Trustees at the Aggie School. Giving us blanket approval for easements makes things very easy because both easements and right of entry, because now it's a paperwork thing. We don't have to negotiate anything, this is a donation of the property that we'll need. I'm not sure if we're gonna need any of it permanently, but certainly we'll need easements to work on the property and right of entry to go on to the property to construct the sidewalk. And the fact that they offered, I hadn't even thought of a staging area, but they also offered the staging area at the Harrison property, that's great because there will be heavy equipment involved in this construction project, and this means that we can, the contractor will be able to get it off the road at night and over the weekend, and it will be safely in that yard area, so that will not impede the flow of traffic. So thank you very much, Bristol County Aggie School Trustees, for your generosity, and we'll be in touch. The other thing I wanted to mention was, at the last meeting, I mentioned that there would be road repairs, drainage work going on near the mill in North Dayton, and if you've been up there lately, you've seen the Highway Department working on Park Street. A section of the road has been closed off, and they've been working to replace old drainage pipes that are up there. So they'll be there for a few more days, but that's certainly a positive thing because it'll address, it'll allow them to address some of the other drainage issues further up that area in North Dayton.
Thank you, Nancy. Brett, do you have any?
I do not.
You do not. Acknowledgements. First acknowledgement we have is an act of kindness by a Dayton resident.
This amazing person's name is Andrea, I will not reveal their last name. I did not ask her if I could use her name, so I will just read the letter. Her name is Andrea. It's dated June 21st. Took me a month to find out who she was, I had to use the street list, so the act of kindness did occur on Memorial Weekend. Dear Andrea, I would like to thank you for your concern while I was stranded on the side of the road waiting for AAA to bring me a jack from my car on May 29, 2016. Despite the busy Memorial Day Weekend and your need to unload a car full of groceries, you put everything aside to bring me a bottle of water on an extremely hot summer day. We didn't know each other as we had never met before this occasion, yet your concern was for me, a fellow Daytonian and frankly, a stranger. Although some would say it was just a bottle of water, to me, it personified the unique benevolent soul of our beautiful town. Not only do I believe that this occasion demonstrated your kind, charitable, and selfless nature, it also embodied the kind of big-hearted neighborly spirit that I spoke about wanting to foster when I ran for a seat on the Board of Selectmen. I'd also like to thank you for staying outside until the AAA worker had finished changing my tire for me. It filled my heart with both joy and pride to be reminded that our town is full of generous, compassionate, kind individuals like you. I drove the entire way home with a smile on my face, and instead of being upset that my car was in trouble, I was beaming with pride and overcome with emotion as I reflected on your generosity. That happened because of you and your altruism. You changed the entire course of my day for the better, and I will never forget that day, and I will always look back on it fondly. Your actions reminded me of one of my personal favorite phrases, e pluribus unum, out of many, one. Although we still do not know one another personally, I want you to know that I consider you a friend and a kindred spirit. I hope that my actions and performance while on the Board of Selectmen and even as a private citizen live up to the extraordinary standard that you have set for us all. You are an exemplary citizen and a wonderful soul, and I wish you all the happiness in the world. Thank you again. Until we meet again, Brett.
Very good, very nice.
Thank you.
We have a second acknowledgement and a thank you to the Dayton Garden Club.
Nothing in my opinion.
Nothing.
Just thank you.
Verbally.
Well, we'd like to thank the Dayton Garden Club.
Absolutely.
And I do know the amount of time and effort they put in on some of the plantings and the flowers that they decorate around the town hall, especially in this hot weather. They're up there walking from the parking lot with gallon milk bottles full of water and what have you, do a tremendous job, they enjoy it, and the people driving by enjoy it, so we thank you very much for your time and efforts. Next on the agenda, public input, we have a gentleman that has sat through two meetings tonight, he's with us.
Did I understand?
Yes, it was, we're looking for you.
You know what happened there? Number one, I, this nice young man told me, make sure you take your hair off when you talk. You know, we're like, basically we didn't care if you really wanna talk, go to the podium, but I ended up going, I had some business at the assistant's.
Okay, that's okay. I know you came in...
I went down solar, you know, just wanted to get a little taste.
Well, just to fill in the people that weren't with us in the last meeting, this gentleman came in, and he was inquiring about a volunteer application form that he had submitted to the board a little while back, and it happened to have been on our agenda tonight, that we are still taking applications for the town administrator, that's why we haven't notified those that have. The pool is short right now, and we need, you know, a minimum of five, five members, so we're gonna hold it open for another week. Hopefully, you know, we'll get a couple more applications in, we'll go through and screen and call the people in and, you know, give everybody an opportunity to, you know, participate in this committee.
Absolutely.
And we thank you very much for, you know, turning that in.
Absolutely.
But we haven't called anybody because, you know, we don't wanna get anybody's hopes up, we're interviewing, we're still taking applications, so...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, correct?
Yes.
I wasn't, I wasn't gonna let you sleep over, I didn't lay awake, geez, I haven't got anything, you know, no, it wasn't, that wasn't the point. I didn't attach a resume because it was kinda, you know, I thought maybe if you either want me or you don't, or, you know, I don't know what else.
No, it was sufficient what's on there, it's sufficient, right? Yeah, just the intent and your goal or your objective, that's fine, that's fine.
I was getting involved with the town, I thought it might be a good opportunity.
Could you just mention your name and the address again?
I'm sorry, once again. Somebody running down there, well, I like that. It's Thomas, it's the first name, Berquen, I'm at 3076 Hunters Hill Drive, and it's lovely over there. Something that's picking up a little bit, they're building some homes, seems like it's moving ahead. Not here to advertise that, but I mean, basically, that's where I like it. I like Dayton, August 1st, I'll be here four years, I like the town. I lived in Somerset over 30 years, retired from the fire department there, ran for selectmen at one time, but, you know, I didn't win, but I ran, you know, I put myself out there, had a good campaign, it was interesting. I was looking to help that town, because I was retired, but, you know, I didn't really have the money and, you know, campaigning, I've seen you out there, all of you, I've seen you out there, I think this is your last.
Yes, sir.
Your winding down.
Better believe it.
I know what you mean. But just over the years, I knew, just to mention somebody, Danny Wilber, known that guy for at least 30 years, in the same field, started out kinda the same way. You know, we were private ambulance together, going to things EMT and paramedic, all that stuff, so it's a small world. I didn't know he was retiring. That's something, I was getting a little choked up when he's, you know, that's something. Where's the time going?
Are you both firefighter and paramedic?
I'm retired from, I used to teach at BCC, I used to teach the EMT program over there for about 10 years, I did two sections at night. I went to paramedic school in another state and was certified, you know, licensed as a paramedic. When I came back to the area, they didn't have the paramedic thing running yet, they had it down the Cape than they had in Boston, we were just starting out around here, Fall River didn't have one, nobody, so I didn't really, I got to a point where I was off the rescue, but we did have paramedic equipment on the engine in Somerset. But the thing is, when I retired, I was driving a ladder truck, I wasn't...
So you were...
I was a full-time.
Firefighter?
Well, firefighter slash EMT, but I, when I came on board Somerset, they had no paramedic need, so I had a nice resume but no paramedical, I couldn't work as a medic because we didn't, we weren't licensed yet.
Okay, okay.
So basically, I had the knowledge, but I was like, I missed the boat per se, because of seniority, I wasn't really needed at that level, so the younger kids come in, you move up in seniority. I started as a volunteer firefighter on a break point before they closed that. We used to have volunteers and paid, a lot of people don't know we had volunteers in Somerset at one time. When I first came out of Navy, a Navy veteran also, that was the way it was, you volunteers, you get some training, get you to know the paid people, you get your foot, but kinda like you guys, call, you have call people and pay people, full-time and call, so it's kinda like sometimes you can draw your full-timers from your call. If so, you know, it depends on what you, you know, sometimes that's the best way to do it because obviously you know this, I don't need to explain this to you.
Does Somerset have any call firefighters?
Not this time, it's still seven on a shift, it's full-time. They're running two rescues now, though, and they are, the revenue that that third-party building is rather, they're doing pretty good, but I mean, that's the law, they're allowed to do that, but they're in Fall River, so Fall River's so busy, one of those rescues seems like it's always in Fall River, helping Fall River.
So they have two ambulances?
They have, they're running two now.
And then I know they have the rescue truck.
Well, they have two ambulances, if they're, if they're running, if they have enough people on the shift, and the one, the first rescue's out, they'll jump in that other rescue and then call people in for the fire slots. Because if you, figure if you got seven, somebody's six, somebody's on vacation, let's say you're down to six, ambulance is out, you're down to, you know what I mean? Sometimes you got three in the station, a fire, you know what I mean? So they call in extra, you know, it works. Here you supplement your, get your call people, rescues out, tone out, fill it in, you know it works.
So Somerset does a lot of mutual aid with Fall River, is that?
And Swansea and Dayton, and you all, you guys are helping Somerset, I mean, I live here, we help Somerset.
Did you go into Warren and Bristol?
When it really gets hairy, I've been into Warren, and I have never been to Bristol, but I used to go to Warren, 6 and 136, that bad intersection, we used to get a lot of Warren. Swansea goes into Warren a lot. Swansea's running three rescues and a fast attack little paramedic, who buys a truck. That's how that's changed. I remember Swansea, when it was down Ocean Grove, they had like one ambulance, one or two ambulances down the Grove, and that's a volunteer organization, but it's, they pay people to staff that.
Swansea also has those, I'm gonna call them healthcare vehicles, where they make home visits, they look like station wagons or SUVs, but they're painted and they talk about, it's something about healthcare where you can have somebody come to the home...
Come in and help you out, yeah?
Yes, yes, I saw that. What I was, what I was thinking about was in Somerset, when an ambulance would go to Clifton.
Yes.
There would be a fire truck that came most of the time, that was a rescue truck?
Well, this is a good one, I got you. Why is that truck little?
Yeah.
When we first started the paramedic program, that was a big contention, a thing with the public, why are you sending that apparatus? Well, originally it was three EMTs on the ambulance, which they call a rescue, it's an ambulance. What happened was, with all the new equipment, you need the manpower to move that equipment in and get that patient out with all that equipment, because if you're running a cardiac arrest, you got your defibrillator, all your drugs, you need the hands to, and you gotta move the patient, sometimes that's what you need, so you might have the minimum of two guys on the engine, or maybe three, depend on staffing. But that truck is also available for fires that could break free if you need it. But that, that was a big thing, they wanted to know why they were running that truck all the time, that's how it was explained, it was for manpower, with this new advanced life support program. In other words, you got all that gear now that you're carrying. And Fall River started to do it on certain calls, they're sending cardiac arrest, respiratory, car accidents, all that. So it's kinda changing, it's not, not everybody's doing it, but down the Cape, they'll run three medics on a rescue, and then if they need help, the truck will go. They're running three, an officer and two firefighter, paramedic. Now, that's three on the rescue, so you may not need the truck, you see what I mean? But they're also, they have the money, some of those places have the fire district funding, which is different from some funding formulas, you know? But I mean, you gotta remember, that third-party building brings in revenue, depending on your formula, does it go to the, back into the general fund, you take some of it, and like Somerset's changing some of their rules where they can, they're actually paying, don't quote me specifically, but I think 11 physicians just from that, some of that money and equipment, and now they've changed the funding where they can replace an ambulance with some of that money. Instead of going to you guys, let's say, for example, going to the board saying, my ambulance, the engine blew up, I need a, a rescue, will you fund it? So it's actually interesting, that's just from me working there, I know, I was EMT, I did some, I was involved, you know, coordinator and stuff like that, you know, I didn't wanna go on for a follow-up. Does that answer your question?
Yes, very informative, thank you, thank you.
I used to go to Clifton frequently, so I would see the trucks, I would see the ambulance come in, and Somerset would send the truck, and then when other ambulances came, sometimes they were, they were private, it was just the ambulance that showed up.
In that situation, what you have there is the private ambulance, transportation is usually handled by the private companies, non-emergency, but you get a critical care, it's just, I don't care if somebody's, it's still your mother, your relative, so the nurse makes a decision, I can't wait for the private, I don't have one available, they'll call us, if it's an emergency, we have a duty to respond, it's a duty to act, so that's...
My preference was, I told them, my preference was the town of Somerset, it was the fastest one that I had seen.
You can't go to...
They're right up the road, and so for the most part, when we needed somebody, it was the town of Somerset, and only if Somerset was not available would they call...
Private.
Yes, but they did take longer.
Oh, yeah, because they're not, nothing against the private, but I mean, that's why you have, like Dayton, you're in town, that's your, that's the idea of providing the service for your citizens, is you're in town. Yeah, sometimes mutually, you may have to call AMR from the town because there's just nothing available, but that's the backup to the backup. But you know, you're like the fire commissioner, police commissioners, all that, right? Besides the selectmen, I guess. Health department, I figured out, I was in long meetings.
Plumbers, electricians.
And think about, think about what I would apply for, you know, find out where, you know, but I should have, well, you know, a little paper, at least know where I'm going with.
Right.
This is the central clearing, I think, we'll call it, that's all I have.
I know you've got something.
Yeah, first of all, this gentleman's gonna be a good politician, because he, he he referred to me as a young man.
Oh, that's good.
Neither, neither is blasted, but anyway, do be nice. We spoke, you spoke earlier about Selectmen's meeting, they have been on, but the new people didn't go along, didn't know that it was a set time, so now the Selectmen's meeting will be on every day at noon time and every evening at seven, but they have been on, but they didn't know that there was a prior set time, so that's been squared over.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, they will put a KMLB notice on the news.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olney.
Okay.
He came all the way from Maine to straighten this out for us.
He's missing his custard.
It's a tough job.
So who takes care of the dog with the frap when you're not there?
He's home back in, uh, uh, Andover. He's, he's back in Andover. Who'd be there this week? I'll be back. I believe in Frank.
Thank you, Ed.
That's fun.
Matt, did you have something for us?
I do. Uh, I don't know if it's something to discuss now or if we wanna go into executive session. What's the status of hiring either another full time or a couple more part-time dispatchers? Something needs adjusting immediately.
Well, we haven't decided which way we're gonna go yet. Um, the applications that we did receive weren't that many. Weren't really what we were looking for. Um, what concerns do you have as far as staffing or?
It's, it's staffing. I mean, I know what us part-timers are doing.
There's three of you, great.
Yeah, there's three of us that fills six shifts a week. That's a little more than per diem. That's full blown part-time. We all work regular forty hour a week jobs. I'm not the point, I want nothing to do with the double anymore. It's getting out of hand, totally ridiculous. And I don't wanna speak for the other two, but talking to them, they're feeling to the same way. The overtime costs are getting out of control. I know from your standpoint, I've been there a year ago. Um, you know, to be mandated, the full timers that again, they're working all week long. And now you're gonna force them to sit on a Saturday night and Sunday afternoon to get the blueprints. Um, you know, that's, that's the gist of it. I, I don't know if it's an issue of attracting more people, you know, better people. Either increasing pay or looking at, you know, as far as a part-timer, increasing pay, shift differential, something like that. But something needs to be done, it's gotta be done quick because.
Let me ask, how long have you been part-time?
Over six years.
Um, did you ever have assigned shifts or assigned times to work as a part-time?
Uh, one point, it might've been a year where the idea was kinda thrown out, out there and just trying to see how it worked. And then I remember, I think it was kind of set that I always had, like, it might've been a Sunday or a Saturday. I don't really remember for so long, but it was right after I'd started. Then just people coming and going and everybody's schedules changing and people wanting a weekend off to go away or whatnot. Just build it as, as we can do. So.
This, this is not a topic we've thrown aside. You know, we've been discussing it as, as it's late too.
I asked everybody else and they're like, we don't know, we don't know, you know, like we haven't heard anything and. So.
Well, the pool that we received just wasn't there, you know, and, um, the time is, that's ridiculous for the cost that they're, they're charging now. I mean, five hundred dollars to put a two inch by one inch, it, it's crazy. To get two applications and one's from fifty miles away, you know, so.
I'm not gonna drive fifty miles for sixteen dollars an hour compared to that.
So, uh.
A year ago was thirteen, so.
And then we put it in again, we got one. So the, the pool wasn't there. So we're, we're, we're discussing going two different directions, you know? Full time, part-time, we haven't come up with it yet. You know, we're done the end of the year stuff, so you know, we have a little more time now. But we're, we're gonna address it. We're gonna, we know the problem.
It's getting bigger, so.
Yes, it is.
Do you have a recommendation, Matt?
Sure, we at least right now, at least two more part-timers would be ideal. I mean, if you get somebody from another town, something's gonna entice someone to come over to Dayton. Um, that at least alleviates the strain on those six chefs a week.
Would a full-time help?
That, I don't really wanna answer a hundred percent because that's something that I have to work out with union. Um, given that it's a union, that's, you guys have to sit down with unions.
Well, we have, we have three. We have three full-time right now.
It's the way the shifts would work, you'd have to, when I worked it out, you'd have to at least put three of the four full-timers. On like four and two rotating schedule, just, you know, work it out. Still, you have two open chefs a week.
We had, did we, we had four at one time, right?
Uh huh, yep. Years before full-timers.
So I mean, I, I know even if the full-timers want to take vacation right now, if you go out for a medical reason or whatever. It's almost impossible for me to do anything during the week without me taking vacation time from my regular job. And I know it's difficult for the other two as well. I mean, I get back down to the full-timers essentially being forced, whether later or not. So I know other towns that either I've worked in or worked for or worked closely with in other areas. I just kinda throw it out to people like, hey, I was, you know, in the fire hazard dispatch, things like that. They all kinda just are like, oh, you know, we have no problem, you know, we pay this and we have X amount of full-timers and X amount of part-timers. We have this many chefs for part-time available, you know, for the month and we don't really have any trouble filling it. Um, you know, I said, I ask when it comes to recruitment and getting some new people in, whether it be full or part-time. It's, you know, we just, either we pay more or we have some good benefit that entices someone to leave another town to come work for us, even if it means dragging two minutes further down the road or they work in forty minutes that ate the full on a Saturday. Something just has to work better for that person to wanna come work for the town. Whether it be the shift differential or, um, you know, higher pay. I don't know what other towns around here are paying. That's something that we have to look into, but something has to make someone wanna come work here. Given walking that police station, I know it's beating a dead horse, but the conditions of that dispatch is horrific. The whole police station's horrible. I know that's a whole other issue, I don't wanna get into that, but get someone coming, I know what a burgies, police dispatch looks like. I have no problem sitting there all day compared to down there. That's, so something needs to.
How long does it take to get someone trained to be a dispatcher?
It's a way to learn. Um, the regulations changed, I believe you'd have to ask probably Paul to be able to do a better answer. I think it's, assuming they would have a, the state would be holding up a class like right after you would hire someone. Could be a month, just in, you know, classroom time. And then you'd have to, you know, do training in, in the station with a full timer, make sure that they're comfortable with the person and that they can handle. You know, the way that we operate, they can handle them out of the line and everything else, so. For me, it was a couple of months by the time I was on my own.
I was gonna say about three months.
Yeah.
To be, you know, comfortable.
Oh, probably three months. So if we get someone that's already trained and they can walk in the door and spend four or five shifts and making sure that they're comfortable with the way the town, this town operates versus another town that you're coming from. That's a much better option, but you gotta find someone that's willing to come.
When we post a job opening, where is it, where is it posted? I know we said the Gazette, I'm sure Town Hall. Um, do we do, okay, do we do job boards?
No, what happens is it goes into the print newspaper and it also goes on wickedlocal.com.
It's, it's also posted at the police, uh, page on the police website. Because it's open, we, it's open, it doesn't have a deadline for an, uh, applying. Cause we're hoping anyone that sees it will submit an application.
My question is specifically, why, why, um, for these town-funded jobs? Why can't we post on Indeed, Idealist? That's where people look. People aren't looking on, no, no offense. People are not looking for jobs on townofdayton.com. Um, I think that's where people look for jobs. I, I recruit.
I'm sure we're not looking in the Breckton Enterprise, because of the Herald or the Times Gazette. Because we spent a thousand dollars for two ads and had a total of three applications.
And that's the thing, if you post, you know, on an, on a website like Indeed or Idealist. Um, it's, it's actually way cheaper than that and you're gonna get more applicants. And then you're gonna have the luxury of being able to sift through people, cause by sheer volume. So maybe we could look into that.
I'll do.
Is there a specific paramedic job site that I don't know about where?
I don't know. I mean, like with the health officers, you know, there's two, there's mass health officers. I mean, this is totally separate, but, you know, if I were looking for a health officer position. I'd look at MHOA and beyond, because that's, they have their job posting site and generally health boards and the early population. That's where they're gonna post, because that's private bill. I don't know where you post, please sir, dispatcher.
That's a good thought. Get, you know, get away from the paper stuff, because it's not doing us any good. You know, we're just going broke advertising. Look at the dog on town warrant.
Nobody reads them.
That, that Florida sent us a bill after they've already set up the type print, forty-eight hundred dollars. No more. And they wonder why they're going out of business.
Nobody buys paper.
That's right, that's right.
Pointless.
But Matt, I mean, we're a hundred percent with you, you know, we know the problem. And we see it every week, you know, assigning those warrants and it's, it's, it's not comfortable.
I just feel bad for, for the full timers because after August, I'm not gonna put in any avail, any availability to set myself up for a dollar. I'm just, I'm not. And I feel horrible about it. You can ask my wife because all the time I'm saying I feel bad about this. I feel that I was gonna do it in August and I didn't. I just, I've had enough. I need a little bit of time every once in a while for.
Just a once in a while, right?
I remember doesn't ask for much, but you know, it's, it's just. But on, on the other end, I, like I said, I feel really bad because now, you know, it's forcing the other two part-timers to do your washups or the full-timers to be forced in. And again, you know, the nerve support that I'm in, you know, working.
Do you think, do you think having more job postings in more places would matter? Do you think that would increase the likelihood that we'd get applicants?
We didn't get anything, we didn't get anything local. Nothing close.
Yeah.
You know, and it was posted all around. I mean, people talk, you know? That, I was shocked at that. Nothing from Swansea, nothing from Berkeley, nothing from Rehoboth, nothing from Ccon. You know, everybody worked in these towns, you know, nobody wants a part-time job. We tried it full-time, we tried part-time. We'll take any application. Nothing, nothing.
Are the part-timers unionized? No, right?
No.
No.
There's nobody, there's nobody really to speak for us or help us or anything.
My, I guess my concern is, you know, just in general, if, if, you know, one way to incentivize that you had mentioned is offering to pay more. Does that mean we have to pay all of the part-timers more or just the new people? Cause I see a problem with.
It would have to be.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Where? The position.
It's not, I mean, whatever three bucks. You know, I just, I look at, I know one other town that I know of and it's a little more affluent community, but they're paying the part-time dispatcher, it's like twenty-two bucks an hour plus shift differential, plus overtime.
So they're a lot of benefits, yeah, yeah.
You know?
We're, we're working on the facility.
Yeah, I know. So I mean, it just has to be something to make people wanna work. And I don't know what that key is, but.
Do you think applicants, you know, just theoretically, I don't know if this has ever happened. When they, when they go to tour the facility to see if they want the job there, do you think that's hindering people from from taking the job?
I don't think in this case, if there has been anybody, they're just not responding, you know?
It would.
I hadn't tried to ask them.
I mean, I had one, I had one applicant come, come up, hand his application in, ask him where it is from, which fifty-something miles away. I says, how, how much experience you have? Two months? You're gonna drive fifty-two miles? Hundred and four miles?
It's about, you need to find, you gotta, you need to find someone that's actually gonna stay more than six months. And I've seen a number of people come and go, they last four months, six months, whatever they go. I don't know what the issues are. Personally, I really don't care. It's not my business. I go, I work. I do my job, I work on it. But whatever the reasons are, you know, new people that, that stay.
Sometimes we're wrong for them, not, uh.
Right.
I mean, I know someone that actually worked for Chief Spratt for a short time. And then she got another job, uh, this is back in the old days. I mean, Sergeant Dootch was a private, your fire, your police chief was a private at the time. Um, but she found a better position somewhere else in the private sector dispatching for more money in a different facility. But I mean, she found out, she was in, uh, somebody, it sounds crazy, but I mean, she just found out by somebody. They were talking in the gas station, getting a cup of coffee, you guys were hired. And I, she walked in totally hard.
Probably about seven years, six and a half years ago, when I'd been working for private ambulance companies and dispatching for them and working on the truck and, I mean, they were paying crazy money because I could do both and they could just throw, oh, you know, we need dispatchers, we need dispatchers. And they paid awesome, but you know, the company closed, I was traveling up to Boston and, um, they moved to town and I was talking to Jimmy Holland, because he worked in the office above for me. And he's like, you know what, I don't work on a part company, it's like I work in dispatch now. He's like, would you be interested? He's like, you already work, you know, Samaritan. He's like, I think you'd be great, why even not throw an application? And I, I would've known nothing about it, you know? So word of mouth, you know, wasn't for Jimmy, I wouldn't be talking to you, you know?
If I know anybody out there, I'll send them your way.
Absolutely. Thank you. Feel free.
So, I mean, I, even I, I can talk to some of the other dispatchers and police officers I know from other towns in the area. But they get even out of that, I don't know, but.
It's a good way to get your foot in the door. I know Somerset, they would bring them in, reserve officers, put them in dispatch. And they work their way up. And then if there's an opening for a patrolman and they get the funding and they can send them to you, you know, that process. You know, a lot of guys that started off dispatching went into patrolmen. I mean, I don't know if that's an incentive, maybe somebody did it for the door and maybe somebody's sticking that way. That would leave you there in criminal justice or PCC. I don't know. I don't know, like you say, you go in there, I don't know how you get in the door.
And then keep.
For a while, I did work out under the reserve academy and, you know, they do both and then.
It's tight.
It could be a ten-year plan for somebody, but.
I actually thought we'd, we'd get a few applications from Fall River.
Yeah.
Cause that's a, that's a swinging door over there, dispatch. That city council, you know, cuts it, cuts a budget, puts it back, cuts it, puts it back. And it seems like it's always that department, you know, it's a revolving door. We didn't get a single one, not a one. And I know they weren't paying more than we were.
They wouldn't have to locate the, I see that's not that.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. Now there is. Running all of them.
Well, Matt, I wanna thank you very much. Um, it's, uh, very informative and we've been looking for a solution, you know, because we're playing, playing both ways. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for having me.
Okay.
What brought you to Dayton from Somerset? Was it you retired and you wanted to move?
I'll make it quick, because I don't wanna go on that too long. But basically what happened was sold the house in Somerset to my oldest daughter. Planned for her to move to Colorado with her family out there. The youngest son, they, the son, a big grandbaby, a little baby comes along. Grandma doesn't wanna go to Colorado, wants to be, I'm like, what? I sold the house. So I got a place in, I got a place in Swansea for, I'm over there, you know, renting a place, nice, you know, five years I'm over there. We're, we're pretty much ready. Oh, you know, what do you think? You're gonna make it when I listen, oh my God, you know, forget it. So here I am, I accidentally was going by there, Hunter's Hill, looking for, cause the lady I was in shared a cellar house. So I had to get out of there, right? So I'm like, what am I doing here? I gotta find a place, you know? I didn't wanna go back to Somerset, taxes are going up, I don't know what's going on, the power plants, you know, the whole spiel. So I'm like, uh, I'm looking at the gate and I'm like, this seems expensive to me. I've never been in it. I didn't even know it was there, number one. So I call the thing, there comes this lady, you know, she caught me right up, you know, she comes up, you know? She goes, I said, do you have any, you know, how much does it cost? I mean, do you have any rentals, number one? I didn't think they had, they had rentals.
They did?
Because what happened was, remember when the bomb, kind of the bubble burst and kind of went, you know, went dead there for a little bit? They had to rent a lot of their properties to pay the bills. These people had invested, some people lost money, you know? So, uh, there were renters with the, you know, the option if you wanted to buy it. So, just so happens this woman is leaving, she wants to get out in a month. So I tell her, I said, all right, we go in, they show us the house, the lady's like, hey, you wanna do it a month early? Well, hey, check us out, we're gonna, everything was fine. Next thing you know, I'm in the house. It's like the better we look, because I'm coming in, you know, I got my truck. I'm like, I move myself, you know, I'm thinking, I got people in there that are like, what the hell? You know, I mean, I don't mean to swear, but they're like, no, it's not that I'm, you know, I'm a middle-class person, not like a millionaire or something. It just seemed like this, some people were kind of fancy people. So I didn't know if I was gonna, I fit in fine, you know, it was like anything else. But that's how I ended up there, was by accident. And that's where I become the Daytonian.
So you bought the house?
And I'm in South Dayton, I know the North Dayton, South Dayton, you got that.
Not anymore, not anymore.
What's that, you go there?
Right, we only have Dayton.
But anyhow, it was, you're hit with, I'm kidding about that, but I'll leave it at that. One of the barber shops. But I mean, basically, it was by accident, but I loved the town.
So you said you bought the house, you were renting?
I rented it for three years, come back from a trip from Colorado and she's like, um, she had five, uh, she had some lots and some property there. So she built all the homes, sold them, and I was the last one and I had the first option to buy it, and I did, because I loved it there. So I'm here, so that's how I became Daytonian or whatever it is. I, I, I don't know. Anyhow, I like it here, that's why I'm here and I'm staying.
Why don't you stay here?
I am staying, I mean, that's, when I leave, no, I mean, I bought the house.
The heck with Colorado, right?
I'm staying here, I mean, we, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not listening to that again. I've been here like, uh, let's see, I'm going on thirty-eight years now, hey, that's it, man. I'm not going anywhere. And my youngest daughter's talking about having a baby, so I'm not going anywhere, you know? So she lives around here too, so, not like. So it's basically, long story short, accidental discovery. But I like the history, I like the town.
It's still small enough.
It's still country, it's moving a little, I mean, but not too fast. I like, you know, I lo, I don't mind, I like it. I mean, the tax, I mean, it doesn't bother me, I think it's reasonable. But we don't have a lot of like the old days, we, you know? We don't have a lot of industry like the old, you know, when it was booming, you know? Back in the day, you hear some of these guys talking, you know? You know the guy used to be able to talk? He left, I mean, he's not, he didn't run again. You know, talking about the last selectman that retired or, you know, talking about.
Patrick.
No, Mr. Menjies. Oh, Mr. Menjies.
Yeah, Patrick. Now that guy, that guy knows the history and he could, you know.
I think.
His sister is the historian.
I like the guy.
I think the thing about, um.
Just to see him die at Dunkin' Donuts.
The comparison or contrast between Dayton and Somerset is really that.
It's country.
Dayton still has more open space and house lots tend to be larger.
Oh, absolutely, I got to respect.
And there, um, we don't have as many streets that go around in circles and dead ends.
Oh, man, you're talking American service.
Well, not only that, even closer down to the center, uh, there were some streets that you drive up and you get up there and realize you can't go anywhere. It's just, you know, but, um, the houses are really tight in Somerset.
Well, you know, Somerset is the dense, the most densely populated town. I believe the second most densely populated town in the Commonwealth, I believe. I could be wrong, but when I was doing all my demographic research and all that stuff, when I was running for selectmen, I don't know if I was running for it or running away from it, but eventually.
Well, there's not a lot of open land. The, the land up behind, the, the land up behind Clifton is absolutely gorgeous. And it's protected, fortunately.
Probably won't get out of it.
But, um, but anyhow, yeah, I, I. Hey, they're taking down those, those oil storage tanks now, so that's the sale.
That was not close.
At Montauk, they're taking those down.
Council. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Very much. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
You sure you're gonna wanna hang out for a little bit?
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Big touch.
Enjoyed it, yeah, thank you. But you know, at least you're off there right now, I'm not moving.
Well, if you disappear, we're gonna go to call.
If I do disappear, all right.